Good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for January 13th, 2015, and happy, happy, happy New Year. As is our custom prior to calling the meeting officially to order, we will have the invocation and the pledge today. The invocation will be presented by our good friend Reverend Marvin Doc Freddie. He is the Director of Chaplain Services at the Cobb Detention Center, and this is the, we believe, the twentieth year he started off our New Year's giving us a prayer. So Doc, we, man, it's so great to have you here with us today. His invocation will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance from Officer Bill Rogers, who has been with the Cobb Police Department thirteen years and is assigned to the STEP program. For those that wish to do so, please rise for the invocation and the pledge.
We thank you for these distinguished ladies and gentlemen who are willing to take the point of leadership in guiding our county to its beauty and its splendor that we enjoy so much. We thank you for our law enforcement personnel that help to keep us safe. We're just thankful to be in America and thankful that we can call ourselves a nation under our God. I ask now in behalf of this, as we enter this new year, that you continue to endow these leaders with your wisdom, that they will lead in God and help us as our county continues to flourish in the ways that you deem possible for us. It's a tremendous responsibility, and we thank you for those that accept it and carry it out. We ask now that you be in this meeting today, as well as the rest of the year, if you should delay your coming, that thy will be done and accept our thanks, I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just as one.
Always good to see you. Glad you're here and look forward to seeing you next year, sir. And thank you, Officer Rogers. We appreciate you being here as well. Before, I will not, now I'm gonna call this meeting to order, but before we go on to our first agenda, I want to make a great Cobb County welcome to our newest District Commissioner for District One, Mr. Bob Weatherford. Appreciate you being here, sir.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I was wondering if, I was wondering if there's any words of wisdom from any of the board at this point?
Just to make sure that when you're speaking that, you know, you turn on your mic. And when you don't want to be heard, you turn off the mic.
I can't tell you how important that is.
Is it working now? Mr. Cupid gave me the wrong input just a minute ago, and I was going to be muting when I was talking and talking when I was muting, so thank you for correcting that.
Very good, but thank you. So we're gonna move on to tab one with the presentations. The first presentation is for the Fourth Quarter Customer Service Excellence Awards. Mr. County Manager and the Commissioners can join us up front, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and thank you for joining us to honor and recognize six of our fourth quarter customer service specialists that we're recognizing this morning for that award. First of all, let me just talk about, in 1991, we had a task force that was formed to look at ways to improve customer service and to develop a program that ultimately become formalized by the Board of Commissioners. So we've, so since 1992 and 93, we've had the council, and they've worked on that. And I tell you, they've done a great job, and I just want to say, beginning in this new year, thank you to the council that's all here. Again, thank you for the fine job you do. Now getting back to our awardees today, we're so proud of them. I'm gonna turn it over to Christian, Ms. Lofman, in a minute, but our awardees, we recognize them this morning, where they come in on breakfast to say thank you for what you do for the citizens of this county and the customer service. An opportunity to have a photo shoot with the chairman that will be hung in the service centers or displayed in the service centers for, no, it'll be displayed there for one for a quarter. And, and then there was a small gift from my Board of Commissioners to say thank you. They also will be eligible to compete for the Customer Specialist of the Year Award, which they'll get an even, the winner will get an even larger gift from the Board of Commissioners, say thank you for what you do. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Lofman, and she gonna tell you and introduce our six awardees and let you all know why we're so proud of them. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and special guests. On behalf of the Customer Service Council, it is a great honor to present one third quarter and five fourth quarter winners of the Cobb County Customer Service Excellence Award. Each of these employees was nominated by their coworkers and supervisors for consistently going above and beyond customer service excellence. This morning, we are pleased to give them formal recognition. Would the honorees please come forward as I call your name? Our first honoree this morning is Marlene Bowville. Marlene works part-time as a program leader in the nutrition unit for senior services. In this role, she works with staff to order the food needed for each week and ensures accurate food orders are received. She is also required to communicate with volunteers and clients of senior services. Marlene was nominated for this award because of her can-do attitude and willingness to step up to the plate during a recent transition phase within the department. During the transition, she volunteered to take on additional responsibilities to ensure services provided to our seniors were not disrupted. On several occasions, she adjusted her schedule to finish her job with Meals on Wheels on time so that she could assist the Marietta Neighborhood Center because of staffing issues. Meals on Wheels is an important program that Marlene oversees. One Friday, she learned that, at the last minute, that a gentleman needed a few meals for the weekend. Without the meals, he wouldn't have been able to eat until Monday. Marlene volunteered to drop the meals off to the man on her way home that evening to ensure he had sufficient food for the weekend. She is always willing to assist, even if it is the simple task of lending a helping hand and assisting Meals on Wheels volunteers load their vehicles. Thanks for the care and concern you show to Cobb County seniors and volunteers, Marlene. I have no doubt they appreciate you as much as we do. I'd now, I'd now like to recognize Teresa Hayes. Teresa works at Police Precinct Four as an administrative assistant. In addition to being the face of the precinct, Teresa keeps the precinct's detectives in line by organizing and filing case records and providing copies of the records to the District Attorney's Office. She also answers phone calls and does administrative reporting, which includes calls and case updates from victims, complainants, or even detectives, and could consist of taking additional information such as serial numbers, suspect information, or new investigative leads. She also checks the police email notification system, known as PENs, in response to its email daily. In January 2014, the two administrative technicians assigned to Precinct Four retired. When this occurred, Teresa managed her normal duties, as well as carried out the day-to-day functions of the administrative technician position without complaint. According to Sergeant Michael Kreider, Teresa is a motivated individual and a valuable part of Precinct Four's team. When asked how things are going to get done, she always says, "I'll do it." The additional duties that she performs aren't things that were assigned to her; they are things that needed someone to step up and take the initiative to accomplish. Teresa is willing, is willingly that person, even if it is jumping in to clean the precinct when no immediate assistance is available. Teresa has received many compliments from Cobb County citizens. One citizen stated she was having difficulty obtaining an accident report online. Teresa was able to help the citizen navigate her way through the website and assist her in getting the report. Teresa was the second or third person the citizen had spoken with, and the only individual who was able to help her. Keep up the great work, Teresa. Your efforts and willingness to help do not go unnoticed among your peers and the citizens of Cobb County. Next, I'd like to recognize Officer Andrew Higgins, our third quarter winner. Officer Higgins is assigned to the Ranger Unit in Cobb County's Police Department. His normal responsibilities include parole and patrol, and investigation of criminal activity at all Cobb County parks, the Silver, Silver, Silver Comet Trail, and undeveloped Cobb County-owned properties. In addition to these tasks, he provides assistance to uniformed officers when needed as they respond to 911 calls. Officer Higgins is being recognized today for his work with Cobb County's Police Explorer Program, which educates youth in police operations to interest them in a possible career in law enforcement and to build confidence and valuable leadership skills for the future. He voluntarily serves as post-advisor within the Explorers Program. This requires him to directly, direct weekly meetings and provide community service at events through the year. Officer Higgins' team of explorers provided more than 2,500 hours of community service last year alone. The team was, has been awarded the National Exploring Excellence Award for the fifth straight year. Every day, Officer Higgins impacts the young adults he works with. One of the seventeen-year-old explorers said Officer Higgins always puts others before himself, and he goes out of his way to make sure everyone is taken care of. He always treats us with respect and kindness. Thank you, Officer Higgins, for voluntarily taking on such an important role in the Police Explorer Program. We are proud that you are reaching the youth of our community. Next up, we have Kenny Kelly. Kenny works in the Tax Commissioner's Office as a property tax technician. He serves Cobb County taxpayers in person and on the phone processing payments and exemptions, answering questions, and directing the individuals to the proper departments as needed. Kenny has received forty-seven customer service comment cards in his first six months working at the front window for the Tax Commissioner's Office. Most of these comment cards highlight his willingness to go the extra mile for Cobb citizens, no matter how long it takes to assist them. One customer commented, "We hear stories every day about poor customer service provided by government agencies. To the contrary, Mr. Kelly is a breath of fresh air and guided me quickly through the processes of pending my tax application." Kenny is not only concerned about the welfare of Cobb County residents and business owners, he also cares about his fellow coworkers. He shares his physical training skills with employees in the Tax Commissioner's Office at the park or the county's fitness center. He does this with enthusiasm and positive reinforcement. His coworkers said, "We spend more time with our coworkers than our families, so having someone at work provide support to living a healthy lifestyle is wonderful." We are grateful to have you on the Cobb County team, Kenny. You are a great example of what customer service excellence should be and for our employees Christopher Poplaski is our next honoree. Working as an appraiser for in the Tax Assessor's Office, Christopher performs appraisals on residential properties for tax assessment purposes, responds to taxpayer inquiries, and works as a lead person coordinating and reviewing the work of other appraisers assigned to his work area, which consists of approximately thirty-three thousand five hundred properties. He serves those in Cobb County, appraisers in the office, his supervisors and managers, and other Cobb County departments. Recently, Christopher was recognized by the Deputy Chief Appraiser for resolving a complex court case in a quick manner. In fact, the Superior Court appeal caseload has been reduced to the lowest level it has been in several years due to Chris's consistent performance, always striving to do his best in getting the job done while also providing a high level of customer service. This past September, Chris was recognized by a homeowner of Cobb County. The homeowner had a meeting with Chris and had several questions about his pending appeal. After the meeting, several follow-up phone calls and emails were exchanged over the course of a week. After answering the homeowner's questions and hearing his concerns, the homeowner sent Christopher an email thanking him for being so generous with his time. The homeowner stated that he could not understand why any homeowner would have trepidations meeting with a tax assessor if they know Mr. Poplaski. He further commented Chris on his professionalism and knowledge while educating him on the appeal process and general assessment practices and procedures. Chris, you are not only an asset to the Tax Assessor's Office, but also to Cobb County. Thank you for showing your customers that they can expect the best during their interactions with Cobb County and for a job well done. Our final honoree, Dorothy Shea, is by no means last when it comes to customer service. Working as a library, working at the library in the adult service department of the Switzer Library, Dorothy is responsible for assisting library patrons in finding and using library materials, including print and online resources. She assists them in locating needed information and teaches them how to use the computers. She is also required to select and review library materials. Dorothy has received this award because of her compassion and empathy toward distressed library patrons. One recent example of this compassion occurred when a young man was having a difficult time finding a ride from the library. The gentleman asked to make a long-distance call with the house phone. Since that was not possible, Dorothy allowed him to use her cellphone. Unfortunately, he was only able to reach a voicemail. Dorothy did some more digging and learned the reason the young man was stranded was because Cobb County Transit would not accept the Mardi Gras card for the fare, and he had no cash. Upon hearing this, Dorothy gave the young man the bus fare to get home. The young man returned to the library a week later to thank Dorothy for her kindness. Another example of her compassion and customer service excellence occurred when a hearing-impaired patron needed assistance filling out a job application. Dorothy helped the individual who complimented her for her patience and kindness. Dorothy went a step further by sharing other resources such as Cobb Works, where the patron could find additional assistance and get more computer time than allowed with a library guest card. I could go on all morning about the above and beyond steps Dorothy takes for her customers each day, but I will be mindful of your time and end by thanking her for the extraordinary customer service she provides daily. Thank you, Dorothy, for putting your patrons first in all that you do for the library system and the county. Ladies and gentlemen, these are our customer service award winners from third and fourth quarters 2014.
Again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners and the citizens of this county, thank you for what you do, and whatever you do, keep up the good work. We're very proud of you. Let me say also, without this, there's a lot of family here in support of those. Will the family members in attendance please stand and show your support? I know there are others would like to be near, but they couldn't. Again, I want to thank you for what you do and sharing them with us. Now, will the Cobb family please stand that's here in support of our awardees this morning? The Cobb employees in some of those departments. That is part of your motivation. You've got a great team behind you, and certainly, thank you for what you do. Again, keep up the good work, and again, thank you to the council for what you do in providing this very, very valuable program. As I often say, all we've got to offer in this county is service, and again, thank you for what you do. Let's give them another big round of applause.
Congratulations once again to the award winners. We appreciate what you do for the citizens of Cobb County. Item two is for Mr. Pearson, our CFO, to present FY14 year-end results. Mr. Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Hankerson. It's my pleasure to, once again, report on the financial audit that we have taken place the last several months. Our fiscal year ends September 30th, and we've been working with our auditors, Crace, Galvis, and McGrath, to do our year-end audit, and we have the results of that audit here this morning that I'd like to present to you. First of all, I'd like to recognize our auditors. Tammy Galvis is the partner in charge, and Jenny Harris is the accounting manager. They're here this morning. They've done a tremendous job working with the county for the past many years and has been a great partner. They're a Cobb County firm that we've worked with for years, and just to thank them for their efforts with this audit, as well as with all the bond work that they've done for us. I'd also like, with privilege of rank, to thank the team in finance that has done most of the work. Bill Volkman, our Assistant Comptroller, is here this morning. Lyndy Tisdell, our Accounting Manager, she has worked primarily with the auditors and her team. We've got a tremendous team in finance. Buddy Tazar, Stephanie Bowley, the other managers, Roxanne Rush. It's truly a team effort within a finance department, as well as with the county, and I'd just like to thank them for their, for their efforts and for the, for the work that they've done to get us to this point. Cobb County tradition, as we kind of prefaced the, the results of the audit, property tax milledage has continued to be maintained as the lowest in the metro area. We've maintained our reserves, and as the chairman said yesterday, in the state of the county, our policy is nine percent, and we've added a one percent economic contingency to make it ten percent. A couple of years ago, we added two additional percentage points to that contingency to make it twelve, and with the new revenue source, Title Abolam Tax Fee, we set aside an additional three percent, just based on the uncertainties of those revenue streams going forward. So we have roughly forty-eight million dollars in reserve, fifteen percent of our budget, which is tremendous. It's looked on very positively by the rating agencies. It's a, it's a very good position to be in from a financial standpoint. The Fire District Fund also has a reserve in place. That fund is supported primarily by property taxes, and we have a five percent reserve. And a couple of years ago, we added an additional five percent to that, so we're now at about seven million dollars for our Fire District Fund for reserves. The Debt Service Fund, again, property tax-supported. Our GO bonds will be wrapping up in 2018, and we set aside one hundred percent of those dollars at year-end for our debt service payments for the next year, and those are in place. So we have got the, the funds in place to fund our January and July debt service for our debt service fund. Again, those are best practices for governmental accounting. We do have an unmodified opinion. It used to be called unqualified, but the Gatsby laws have changed, and it's now an unmodified opinion. That's, that's a good opinion. And we are triple, AAA rated for our eighteenth consecutive year, which is tremendous, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit more in just a few minutes. If I could jump to the next slide real quick. This is general obligation bonds. We were reaffirmed this year, AAA, from our three major rating agencies, Moody's, Fitch, S&amp;P. Water System was also reaffirmed, and as the state of the county yesterday, they've had their AAA ratings since 2001. Our TANs is a short-term borrowing, and that's, it doesn't get the triple AAA rating, but this is the highest rating that a short-term borrowing can get. It's the equivalent to a AAA, and we do that every year, March, April timeframe. The rating scale that I wanted to stress here, as I did last year, if you look at the first three categories, that sixty percent of the triple AAA rating is above and beyond finance. It's the institutional framework of the, of the county government. It's the economy. The economy, years ago, if one industry left, what would the impact be on the economy? Well, we have such a diverse economy now with the brace coming in. We've had expansion. Our economy is strong. If you look at our hotel motel tax dollars or sales tax dollars in a minute, those are all improving. Our economy has, has really shown signs of recovery and sustainability over this last year. Management, twenty percent. This is not only the Board of Commissioners and the policy set, but it's how it's carried out through the county manager and his department agency heads, all, all the way through all county, forty-five hundred county employees. Then you get to the financial components. Finance touches all of these areas, but there are specific areas, liquidity, which is our reserves, budgetary performance. Do we have the flexibility and the capability to make adjustments as needed with contingencies? Our flexibility, and what is our debt and contingent liabilities? Going back to the previous slide, this is a history of Cobb County, established in 1932. We had our first CAF reward in 1985. When you look at management and stability, the triple AAA rating was really a vision of Mr. Hankerson and Virgil Moon back in the early nineties, and for eighteen consecutive years, we've maintained this through various boards, through policies given, carried out through the, the management of the county manager, who's been here since 1993. So the triple AAA rating, I would guess probably only a handful of counties within the country have maintained an eighteen-year consecutive triple AAA rating. There's forty-one currently right now, but a very small number that have had it for eighteen consecutive years. So this county has been very fortunate with its management team, with its employees throughout, throughout the county, as well as the, the various boards that have served over the years, providing policy direction. These are just some quotes that, that have come from ratings that we've had recently. I won't go through them, but they, they talk about the strong management practices, sustainability, financial policies, very positive comments about the, the management of Cobb County. Property tax collection rates, we have typically budgeted ninety-five percent. In prior years, in the mid-two thousands, we would budget ninety-four percent of our property taxes in one year, and the budget the remaining portion in the next year. We have a sixty-day window to capture our revenues, and anything that's collected after November 30th gets pushed to the next year. We've had some very strong collection rates the last two years. This year, we're at ninety-seven point nine percent. It doesn't change the amount of money that we bring in, it just changes what fiscal year we have to record those monies. And this year, we're gonna record ninety-seven point nine percent of the revenues in FY14 as compared to what we budgeted for ninety-five percent. And there'll be an item later in the agenda today that will reallocate that two-point-nine percent to the next fiscal year so that we can match the, the revenue streams with the operating expenditures. Again, very strong. We're seeing efficiencies in our Tax Commissioner, Tax Assessor's Office that have allowed us to, to get these monies in quicker. So again, it's county-wide efficiencies that, that have accounted for a lot of this revenue. General fund revenues, we are heavy on the property tax side. We're typically fifty-four, fifty-five percent. We have a new revenue source beginning in 2013, the Title Abolam Tax Fee. The Uniform Chart of Accounts, which is a state law, requires us to show that as property taxes. That's sixteen point four million, and that's about four point six percent. So if you take the four point six percent off of the fifty-nine, our property taxes are right at the fifty-four, fifty-five percent, and the increase to fifty-nine is because of the Title Abolam Tax Fee. Again, very strong revenues that we've seen. The general fund, the primary operating fund of the county, this is where most government services take place in the county, unless they're required by law to be accounted for in another fund. Revenues, three hundred forty-eight million, seventeen million dollar variance. Four point five of that million, of that variance, is the two-point-seven-nine percent collection increase over the ninety-five percent. We're getting it in fourteen, we budgeted in fifteen. So that's, really, it's not a, a variance that, we, we expected that variance, just in a different fiscal year. We did have a increase in our digest of three point six percent, which added two-point-six million. We had some not-on-digest collections, another two-point-six million. We saw some increase in our insurance premium tax, as well as one point two million in our business license. And so again, we, we saw a lot of economic growth in our revenues from growth within the county, which again is very positive. Our expenditures had a variance of eleven point two to the positive, which means we spent less than what was budgeted, which again is a reflection of county management, the direction to the department agency heads, and how they've managed their departments. Three point two million or three point three million of that variance is because of personnel. We budget vacancies, and if you look through the course of the year, we've maintained about the same number of vacancies as we started the year. Maybe different positions, different departments, but the, the number has stayed the same, so we've been able to, to realize a, a savings of positions being vacant of about three point three million dollars. We've also had six point, six point five million in operating savings. Again, this is elected officials, sheriff's office, county manager departments have been very conservative with their spending, very efficient, and have done an excellent job in managing their departments, doing more with less, continued the discipline that, that we instilled back in the, the days when the economy was really struggling. We've had one point four million in capital savings for renovations and building and structures, and then we had our general fund transfer was slightly down. Again, this is primarily from the operating transit subsidy and the contributions that we make to the transit fund, as well as to the solid waste fund. We've had some savings there as well. Again, a very positive year for the general fund. We finished with an eight point five million dollar increase of revenues over expenditures. After reserves, we have approximately two to three million dollars of available After reserves, we have approximately $2 to $3 million of available fund balance that would be available for contingency purposes. Next slide. Our Fire District Fund, this is a special district fund. It's it's carved out, we've carved out three cities, Marietta, Smyrna and Austell, they all have their own fire department. So this is unincorporated Cobb plus the other three cities. We have a separate milledge rate for this, which counts for about 95% of the the revenue stream. The 4.7 million is again indicative of an increase in the digest growth from 2013 to 2014. The expenditure savings, 80% of this fund is personnel and there are some vacancies that take place throughout the course of the year and that's primarily from turnover vacancies as well as some slight operating savings. Again, very strong and that fund does support its own capital plan. So that's any fund balance used there is is generated back into the fire for apparatuses for fire station maintenance equipment. Debt Service Fund, this is our outstanding GO bonds. We currently have three bonds that are outstanding, all park related. The last debt service payment will be January 1st, 2018. We currently have a a fund balance of 1.1 million. That will be used to retire the debt service and will tie the milledge rate for the last couple of years of our GO bonds to make sure that that any excesses are appropriately spent for the debt service. We don't overtax within the debt service fund and it matches the their expenditures that are required. Again, 1.1 million and that increase was, it was about 600,000 last year. And again, the digest had some growth this year and we'll take that into account as we move forward to close out this fund as the bonds are retired. Water System, again, one of the few AAA water funds, independent water funds within the county that doesn't receive any type of contribution from the government. It's all self-supported, $7.6 million operating income, which is very similar to last year. As mentioned yesterday in the State of the Union, there'll be no fee increases for this next year, which again shows the the viability, the sustainability of this fund with how it's being operated and managed. And again, they continue to receive awards for their excellence in their water treatment facilities. Solid Waste Disposal Fund, we have landfills that are currently in a post closure status that we have to maintain. We did accrue a expenditure years ago, or expense years ago for these costs. And if you look at the net position of 18.9 million deficit, that's because we did a 20 plus million dollar expenditure years ago. We have to capture it all upfront and then those costs are then removed from the balance sheet. Again, a very positive year. We had a general fund subsidy of 2.7 million to this fund to retire the or to for the bonds and FY15, we will retire these general fund or these solid waste disposal fund bonds. So those will go away this year and that will again make this fund stronger, which will benefit the general fund, not having to to transfer the 2.7 million to this fund. So that's again, very positive, not only for the solid waste fund, but also for the the general fund as well. The Transit Fund, revenues, 12 million, expenses transfers out 22.9. Last year, we had revenues of approximately 16 million. Most of that's grant related, is timing of when the grants are are received in. The general fund contribution is very similar to last year. Again, it's a lot of this is timing difference of when the grants are received and when they're recorded in the books. The net change is 1.3 million to the minus. Again, you get some accruals in there that that take place. This is very consistent with prior years and much of this is is timing with how grant funds are received. The Golf Course, we entered into a management plan with Mosaic several years ago and I'm pleased to say that once again, we have a positive fund balance, a net profit for the golf course. Again, we the bonds have been retired. We will be able to return cash back to the general fund. We'll bring that forward at the next board meeting. But again, a very positive year. They had some challenges this year with some damages to the greens, but again, they were able to to rectify those problems and generate the rounds sufficient to to make this a profitable venture for the county. The Claims Internal Service Funds, we have a slight decrease. This consists of the Workers Comp Fund, the Medical and Dental Casualty Liability, which is our risk management fund. The deficit within this fund this year, the revenues over expenses, revenues expenditures greater than the the revenues is a reduction in the contributions that we've made to the Health Fund from the employee and employer contribution, which is a positive thing. We've had some fund balance. We've been able to reduce our contributions to the OPEB Fund. So we've been able to back off a little bit on the the contributions, which is why you have a net change of 2.8 million. So this again, while it looks like we're potentially using money, we're just managing the the flows of cash and and we're able to do that this year for the benefit of the county and the employees. Special Revenue Fund, we have an 800 megahertz fund. This is for core replacement. We moved those monies to our capital project fund this year for core replacement of our 800 megahertz system, which is why we have a zero fund balance and a net change of 9.2 million. That's just moved to the again, capital project fund. And our CCSSD Fund, this is our Cumberland Special Service District Fund. We are required by law again to have this as a special fund. This is the 2.7 mils that was taxed, that they agreed to tax themselves for the financing of the Braves Stadium. These monies will be held for the debt service payments that will begin once the bonds are validated. E911 Fund has a slight deficit this year. They also fund their own capital through their fund balance and they use some capital this year monies to enhance their systems. They currently have 3.3 million of fund balance. Law Library broke even this year and maintains a $100,000 fund balance. Again, a a good year for that special revenue fund. It's where special revenues funds should be. The revenues coming in offset the expenditures and maintain a slight fund balance for for reserves. Streetlight District, we saw a net change of a minus $100,000. This was rounded up to 100,000 for their presentation. It was about $56,000 net loss and we have a slight deficit fund balance of about $5,000. And again, we've addressed this with this board in prior meetings to look at the the 3.50 to $4 fee, which was approved and we'll should expect to see some positive numbers this next year as we incorporate that that new fee structure. Parking Deck, this is, we've built a new parking deck. We have a little bit higher debt service with this new parking deck and we're still waiting to see the the revenues coming from the juvenile court. We need to look at this closely. Right now, we have a short term loan from the general fund to to offset this deficit fund balance, but we'll be watching that very closely and reporting back to the board as we see the revenues come in to see where this where this is going. The next page is the Hotel Motel Tax Fund. Again, everything that's collected in this fund has to be spent within the fiscal year. We give 62 and a half percent to the Galleria for their debt service. The remaining 37 and a half percent is used first for the park bonds, I'm sorry, the CPAC forming our center bonds, which we refinanced for a nice savings this last year. And then it goes toward tourist and tourism activities throughout the county. If you look at the bottom part of this slide, we have a 9.66% growth in our hotel motel tax dollars from 213 to 214. Again, tremendous. If you look at the net change, when the economy was struggling back in 2009, it's consistently stepped up incrementally to 4.84 in 2012, to eight and a half percent now to 9.6. So again, just this is a reflection of the economics within the the county and we see it only getting stronger. Special Revenue Funds, we also have some grant funds, CDBG, fund balance of 700,000. This is a timing, anything that comes in is is spent. Cash flows that we draw down from the federal government are spent pretty much within a three to five day business cycle. So this is primarily cash flow and the CSBG again, has spent the revenues allotted to them through this this grant as well for a zero fund balance. Capital Projects, we do have two outstanding SPOLOs funds. The 2005 has a 49.6 million dollar fund balance that is being spent as projects are underway and are being completed. That'll be drawn down. And our 2011 SPOLOs Fund, which we're currently in, has a 221.5 million dollar fund balance as well. And we're seeing a lot of strong activity in that as well to get those projects done. The Public Facilities Fund, this is where we do most of our capital projects that are not that are government related, not tied to the water fund or to the golf course fund, but they would go into the Public Facilities Fund. We have a 24.8 million dollar fund balance. These are monies that have been appropriated by the board either through agenda item or budget for IT projects, for building maintenance, different projects throughout the county that that typically have a a life of more than one year. So we put them in a multi-year budget in a fund that can, those funds can stay available to the departments doing the the work for an extended period of time. Our Stadium Construction Fund, this is where we are flowing monies through for the Braves construction. We've had 3.4 million of expenditures through this fund that the were recognized on our books, but the Braves are funding 100% of that. But from an accounting standing point, we have to flow them through our 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 books. Again, 3.4 million has taken place through 930, 2014. How we achieve these positive results, conservative financial management. We have reserve policies in place that we've gone above and beyond. Aggressive monitoring, we review our budgets on a monthly basis. We meet with Mr. Hankerson, the chairman. We look at the each individual revenue source on a monthly basis. We we look at it in different ways. We look at expenditure controls. We look at all of our expenditures. We have a great budget team, a great finance team that that looks at these numbers. We maintain a balanced biennial budget. We do two-year budgeting, which is a best practice. We're going to move, transition that into a priority based budgeting on a two-year cycle, which again is a a best practice and just strong accountability to to this board, to the county manager, to the public for our budgets. The key to success, again, you saw it this morning with the customer service awards, is the Cobb County employees at all levels. They do a tremendous job. They're the ones that take the direction from their department agency heads that they receive from the county manager. They carry out the policies of this board and they serve the public. They serve the public efficiently through their service and they do, again, they've done more with less and they they've put in the hours and deserve to be thanked and commended for their job. It's what makes these financial statements look good when you look at the payroll and how they're managing their operating costs. The Board of Commissioners, the direction of this board, the policies that are set by this board certainly play a huge part in the success of the county and our financial statements. The elected officials, there's a great working relationship with the elected officials. They they partner with us in budget reductions and cost cutting through the years and really have worked with us in the budget process to to manage their budgets efficiently. Again, the county manager, been here since 1993, one of the primary drivers of our triple AAA rating and maintaining that for 18 years in his direction of leadership, what he provides to department heads. The Cobb Business Community, again, 30% of the AAA rating goes to the economy and that's such a huge part of of the success of of this government, the things that we can do because of the economic growth and the sustainability of our community and the Cobb County citizens, their support and their the direction that they provide through their town halls to the Board of Commissioners, the county manager and the department heads. It's a team effort. Again, they it's a tremendous year from a financial standpoint, certainly very positive and once again, going into FY2015.
Thank you, Jim. An excellent report. My my hats off to you and your team for helping bring this together. Mr. County Manager, David Hankerson, once again, you and your leadership throughout this entire county to help make it such a strong, strong, we have, we had a strong year, we had a good year. I think that was because of the things we've done in the past few years, getting us ready for the point that we'd be, when it when the turnaround started to come, we'd be able to take advantage of it. As Jim said, 50% of the triple AAA is, or 30% of it is is economic conditions and we did what we needed to do when times were tough to make sure that we were sustainable so that we could be poised and ready to take advantage of the upswing when it came along and that's proven to be the right strategy to take. Jim, your your team and again, the people you listed were ironically on my notes here to thank for making this happen because it is a a comprehensive effort between the county manager's staff and employees, any elected officials and the folks that make up the other, the other portion of the Cobb County government and what they do to work with us and your team to make sure that we're all getting where we need to get at the end of each fiscal year. I think it's prudent that we continue to set aside funds for the reserves for the for the issues and those revenue streams that we're not quite certain how they're going to pan out in the long term. I think that's it's important to do. There's some folks, it's unstable across the state and as a result, that alarm issue is something we need to keep an eye on and I know you are and I know you're you're consulting with your colleagues across the state as to how things are doing. So setting that aside for the moment until we get a better feel for where that's going on, that's just prudent and and I appreciate your leadership in making sure that we do that. Our reserves, healthy. Fund balances, everything is just exactly, I can't wait to go to New York. Everything is exactly where it is so we can go up there. Those meetings should be about 10 minutes each as we talk to the rating agencies about how well we're doing. So when they get this stuff ahead of our visit, I know they're going to feel pleased with the direction we've done and how we've recovered from what was a pretty tense year of FY10 and 09 and and some of the challenges we this board had to make at that time. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to the employees of Cobb County. Thank you so very much for everything you do to help us keep things in in where we need to do. FY14, most counties are still struggling and we had a FY14 was a good year. That was, that ended last September 30th. So this is positive, very positive. And here we are, four months into FY15, helped and that's showing every indication of being a strong year as well. So this, I just, I can't tell you how great this report validates everything we've done for the last two years, was the right decisions, the right time and the right direction to take to make sure that we've done and do everything possibly can to keep this county fiscally sound, stable and sustainable. And I think your contribution to that and the results that we're seeing here today are a reflection of that. So thank you so very much. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Ott.
Thank you, Jim. All very positive numbers. Thank you to you and your team for the great job. I just have one question on the general fund budget side. Brad, can we go to that? Is it not really a total of like a $30 million to the positive net? Because if we had $17 million in additional revenue and $13 million in less expenses, is that not a total of $30 million instead of the eight and a half? I mean, I understand where the eight and a half comes from, but overall, it's like a $30 million to the positive, is it, Ott?
What you have is, if you look at the the budget, 331.5 and 353, it's really a balanced budget and what you have is fund balance appropriations that aren't reflected on this slide.
Okay.
So that's impacting some of your your expenditure variances. So if you bump that 353 up, you would have a, if you bump the 331 up to 353 with the fund balance appropriations, you would have a a slightly less because you're appropriating fund balance. We did use some fund balance this year for some.
Okay, so that's not, that's not shown on this slide?
That's not shown on this slide.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Commissioner Burrow.
Yes, Jim, thank you to you and your team and county manager and all the departments that contributed to this report. And is this online or will be today?
It will be online this afternoon, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim. Great work. Appreciate it. So tab three takes us to community development. We have one item to be presented by Mr. Hosack.
Two, tab two.
Our next item is tab two. Transportation, we have one item to be presented by Director DeMassemore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager. We are requesting that you conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for the I-285 multi-use bridge. On November 25th, 2014, the Board of Commissioners authorized the advertisement for and conduct of a public hearing for engineering design services for the I-285 pedestrian bridge, now known as the I-285 multi-use bridge. The board also authorized issuance of a request for proposals to secure the engineering design services. The I-285 multi-use bridge will allow pedestrian traffic access from the Galleria Office Park to SunTrust Park and the mixed use development on the northwest side of I-285 near I-75. The bridge will provide a safe path to link pedestrians to parking and major commercial retail developments in the Cumberland area and will also decrease traffic delays associated with pedestrian movements. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct movements. We request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing prior to expending $100,000 or more to secure engineering design services for the I-285 multi-use bridge.
Thank you, Director. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the public hearing for this item? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Thank you, Director. Now we're on tab three. One item for the Community Development Agency Administration, Mr. Hosack.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Our first item this morning is to request that the Board of Commissioners conduct a public hearing to consider approval of a Chattahoochee corridor plan certificate of compliance for Peter Quinones. This is for the construction of a single-family residence at 3217 Teton Drive. By way of very brief background, Mr. Chairman, the Metropolitan River Protection Act requires that any land disturbance activity within a 1,000-foot radius of the Chattahoochee River be reviewed for compliance by the Atlanta Regional Commission. The ARC or the Atlanta Regional Commission, when they do these reviews, make sure that there are adequate protections put in place by the Metropolitan River Protection Act. They certify that the land disturbing activities proposed by the landowner or the applicant are consistent with those guidelines. Once they transmit their findings to us that the plan proposed is consistent with the guidelines, the law requires that we conduct a public hearing to solicit input prior to making a decision and issuing the land disturbance permit, sir. With that said, we would request that you open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, to consider approval, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hosack. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for, against, or comment on this particular agenda item? Seeing and hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As most of the board knows, we, we get these every so often. It is a requirement under the River Protection Act, and the ARC does a good job of reviewing each one of the requests, and, and with this one, once again, they found that there are no issues. So I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of the required permits.
Second.
There's a motion and a second and any comments from the board? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That takes us to tab four, which is our public comment, our first public comment.
We have one speaker, Monica Delancey, if you could come forward.
Good morning. My name is Monica Delancey. I'm a Six Flags Drive resident, and we represent the Rentals Association, Six Flags Drive community. I'm the first one to congratulate Commissioner Bob Weatherford for being newly elected to the Board of Commissioners. I'm here to address the Six Flags Drive revitalization efforts that's going to be taking place. Thank you to Commissioner Cupid for having open communication about the process, as well as David Johnson and Serena Young. What we want to do is remind you to continue to work together with everyone about the revitalization, making sure that not only are you thinking about buildings, but also think about resources that need to be brought to the area. Some of our residents are concerned about job development as well as transportation. So making sure that we think of all of those things, we're talking about revitalization, and to also, to make sure we partner with community groups as well as residents who have been in the area for a long time, who may not be homeowners, but making sure they have a voice and can be a part of the process. So again, let's, let's look, think about that, and also be looking for a community benefits agreement that we'll be presenting to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you being here today. That's our only speaker. Thank you. That will take us to tab five, our consent. Now first, Commissioners, item 24 is going to be moved, removed from the consent agenda and taken up as an individual item once we've addressed the consent agenda. However, I need to make a motion to add the following non-agenda item to this agenda for our consideration, and that is to add tab five, item 30, consent to authorize the settlement of a workers' compensation claim on behalf of Joshua George. Bring that forward in a form of a motion. There's a second. Any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. It has met the rules of our board to be added to this agenda. So at this moment, I will bring forward a motion that the board approved the consent agenda as revised and authorized execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second? Is multiple seconds? Any comments? Mr. Commissioner Ott?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to make some comments about item number 21. I know there were some questions yesterday at our agenda work session, and I just want to kind of explain to the folks in the audience, my other job has put something similar to this in place, and what this does is it encourages the employees to become more health-conscious by offering rewards for doing certain things that, for example, getting their blood pressure checked, or doing a health assessment, or becoming, getting into a non-smoking cessation program. So health rewards have been shown in many other businesses, and especially the city of Chattanooga, who uses a similar plan to help make the employees healthier and also help reduce the healthcare costs for the county. So I, I think it's a very positive.
Thank you. Well said. Well said. With that, call a question. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners. That takes us to agenda item number 24, and it is to approve the additional recommendation county reserves and authorize the appropriations of approved reserve funds into the FY 2015 budget. And what I'd like to do is bring forward a motion that we approve the item as presented. If I could get a second for the purpose of discussion, I'd appreciate that. There's a second by Commissioner Weatherford. Are there any discussions that relates to agenda item 24 before we call a vote? Commissioner Ott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Majority of what's on this agenda item, I have no problem with. I have exception to the line item for the Cobb Community Foundation Community Impact Grants. First off, I, I find it discouraging that this had been advertised in the MDJ with a January 31st application deadline prior to this hearing, prior to this board deciding if they even wanted to do it. I just, I don't think that was appropriate. Secondly, I have a problem with using surplus funds when we still have the tax increase that was done a couple of years back in place, and so I can't support this entire agenda item with the inclusion of that on there. If, if the chairman sees fit to remove that separate, I could support it. Otherwise, I'm going to have to vote against it.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Let's talk about the Cobb Community Foundation for a minute. Is Tommy Allegood here today? Would you come up, please, sir? I know you've met with each of the Commissioners on this, or made every attempt to meet with most Commissioners, at least communicate. Would you explain a little bit about what it is that you're, we're being asked to consider here?
Yes, as you recall, this time-
Could you, for the record, excuse me, sir, provide us with your name and title?
Yeah, Tommy Allegood, with, with Cobb Community Foundation, 4572 North Side Drive in Acworth, Georgia.
Thank you, sir.
As you will recall, a year ago, we came before you as the Cobb Community Foundation and proposed a community impact grant program. At that time, we shared with you the advantages of that community impact grant program, believing that our mission at the Community Foundation is to create charitable giving resources so that we can impact and make better the quality of life of the citizens of Cobb. The idea at the time, the mission for this community impact grant is to bring forth smaller grants, to have a smaller grant cycle that would be facilitated by the Cobb Community Foundation and be able to touch nonprofit organizations within our community that are smaller nonprofits that would not normally qualify for the Cobb nonprofit grant through the collaborative. So we felt like that there was a gap for grant funding. We felt like that we at the Community Foundation would be able to move forward, be able to touch many of the nonprofit organizations in the, in the community that normally would not be able to qualify for the Cobb County nonprofit grant. So as we worked during the last year, then, as you will recall, late in the year, we continued to work, develop a program. We came to you, each one of you, and I take responsibility for this, Commissioner Ott, we came to you, and I felt like from meeting with each one of you that there was a consensus to move forward. We knew that we, that you would have to approve the funding, just like with the collaborative, the collaborative begins a process, but that funding is later approved by you. We were looking at being able to award these grants in April at a luncheon that we sponsor, that we sponsor every year at our Partners in Philanthropy Luncheon, and we were concerned that if we didn't get that process started, that we would not be able to make those deadlines. So with that being said, and believing that we had consensus, not approval, but consensus, we moved forward with the, with, with the part of the grant application process. And again, I take responsibility for that.
Thank you. Any questions for, for Mr. Allegood, Commissioner Burrow?
I have just a couple. If this is approved, the county will administer the funds, and you would come back to us for final approval once the grants are selected?
It'll be the same type of process as the collaborative does. We will facilitate the application, the, the grant application process, then we will come back and make a recommendation to the board. We'll, we will, through a committee process, we'll come back and make a recommendation to you as to making the grants that we, that the committee has selected. So ultimately, you will approve the grants.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Could you explain, you mentioned committee, could you explain a little bit more about the committee and its makeup and how?
Yes, the, the grant application, the Cobb Community Impact Grant Application Committee will be made up of our executive board, which is four members plus myself, and then we will be asking each one of you to make a, an appointment to that committee, so that if everything worked just right, there would be 10 members on the committee. Each district would be representative. One of the important, important missions and focus of our grant is to make sure, the community impact grant, is make sure that we touch every part of the community, that every part of our community is represented, and that, that we, that we are not leaving anyone out from any size. This grant will also qualify churches for their programs. If they're a 501, and this committee will make those selections. Thank you, sir.
Good. Thank you. Any further questions from the mayor? Commissioner Cupid?
I'd like to thank Mayor Olliegood for speaking with me with respect to this program. We did have the opportunity to speak with you, and I believe that the impact program will address a lot of the findings that were uncovered when we had an audit of our collaborative grant process. And I also believe that we will be able to reach a broader number of nonprofit organizations with the way this grant program would be administered because of the smaller dollar amount, and I think a more general application to apply for those funds. I support the merits of the program, but I also share similar concern to Commissioner Ott that we discussed earlier, in that this was marketed without having full BOC approval. And even though there may have been consensus, my concern is that we often have a lot of times where people will come and speak to the Commissioners about different ideas, and walking away with having, feeling like you have support and actually having authorization to put something in place are two different things, and I'm a little concerned about precedent with respect to that. I'm also concerned that we haven't had a formal response to the collaborative audit, which had some findings. When I say formal response, we've had a response from the audit department, but I believe our director of the audit department will be working with Commissioners this year to get a formal response. And because we haven't had that yet, I feel uncomfortable expanding how we provide money to nonprofits until we address all of those concerns. So while I'm in great support, I think this will work out great. I just believe there's some procedural things that are giving me some cause for concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
A closing comment, if there's no other questions, and that is, I want to thank this board and this staff for being so supportive and committed to our nonprofit community. As we look out across the state, there is not another county commission that is as committed to supporting the nonprofits as this board is. Thank you so much. Happy New Year.
And I think that's, I think that's partly because the board recognizes the nonprofits do such a great job and extend these dollars so much further than we could ever do, and if the nonprofits were not there, not providing the services, not being responsive to what's happening in the streets of the community, that it would create a burden for us and another part. So I think this is, whereas, yes, it's, it's a, we're investing funds into nonprofits to provide services, but I think it's a significant tool to make sure that we don't have other problems and other issues elsewhere. So thank you for your leadership in that part. Mr. Pearson, Commissioner, thank you, sir. Mr. Pearson, Commissioner Burrow has a question for you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Yes, ma'am.
Jim, I know we've discussed this as far as the agenda item, and also with this being actually a pilot program and separate from the collaborative nonprofit that's in our budget process.
Yes, ma'am.
Unfortunately, the, the impact grant program was too late to get in this current budget, and I know Mr. Allegood's been working on it for over a year now, but I think we're all in, in agreement, and if I'm not speaking accurately for the other Commissioners, it does need to be part of the budget process, but this is one-time monies, not budget money, sustainable money. And it is a pilot program that, if approved, will come back to the board for reporting and tracking to see how successful it is or isn't. And at that time, we, we will be requested to look at it, if it's successful enough, to go into our budget with the whole nonprofit group for the next budget. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that, that the time that they would come back to this board with some accountability and results would be about the time that we would need to make some decisions on the FY 16 budget. So the, the timing would work out well.
Okay.
Thank you. I think you do speak for the board. My understanding for the board is that we appreciate and understand that this is a pilot. We understand that as we move forwards, if the pilots, even if the pilot's successful, we have to make a decision whether we want to extend it into next year's budget, and we'll make that decision at appropriate time. If it's not, we'll do it. And so, any other comments from the board? If not, call a question. Motion carries three two. Commissioner Cupid and Ott in, in opposition. Thank you very much. I just want to make one comment. As Commissioner Cupid brought out the response to the audit, the internal audit was done at my request through Mr. Hankerson's concurrence, that that was something we needed to look at to make sure we were being the best we possibly can be in the monies that we do distribute, because although they're a lot of dollars, they're insignificant, they're a small portion, rather, and not insignificant, they're a small portion of overall budget. I too look forward to preparing a final response. That was initially on my desk to prepare a draft of the board's consideration. Commissioner Cupid, I believe you and I met in June, and you agreed to take on the lead for that. So I look forward to talking with the board in the next month, specifically at our retreat, as to how we're going to lead and move forward on this project so we can nail it down prior to, prior to moving forward. So thank you for doing that, and I thank you for the support on that item. So that now takes us to tab six, our transportation. Am I right, board? Tab six.
Look at me, I'm new here.
Okay. Transportation Agency, Director DeMassimo.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners and County Manager, our first item is to approve a contract with CMEs Inc. for construction of roadway safety and operational improvements on Six Flags Drive. This is an approved project in the roadway safety and operational improvements component of the 2011 Splast Transportation Improvements Program. The project consists of minor widening, the addition of curb and gutter, and construction of a five-foot-wide sidewalk along the north side of Six Flags Drive from Riverside Parkway to Six Flags Parkway. It also includes signal improvements and the replacement of a triple 72-inch corrugated metal pipe culvert with a double seven-foot-by-six-foot concrete box culvert. The low bid of $1,628,495 from CMEs Inc. was reviewed and found to be reasonable and responsive. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with CMEs Inc. in an amount not to exceed $1,628,495 for construction of roadway safety and operational improvements on Six Flags Drive.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five zero. Item two, please.
To approve project number E-2540-WO-08 to the 2013 countywide unit price contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises, Inc. for drainage repairs on North Booth Road. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2011 Splast- System Improvements is an approved component in the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program, and we request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number E-2540-WO-08 to the 2013 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Butch Thompson Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $22,405 for drainage repairs on North Booth Road.
Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Anybody want a second?
Oh, gosh.
Commissioner Burrow figures out what button to push. I thought we was just coaching.
I'm not used to sitting over here.
I was just coaching him, and you're like, it's a red, red? No, it'd be. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second, Commissioner Ott. Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Good job, everybody. Item three, please.
To approve project number TBD-TO-02 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with Pond and Company for Engineering Design Services on Cobb Parkway, US 41, at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway. The intersections at Cobb Parkway, US 41, and I-285 westbound off-ramp, and at Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway currently experience heavy congestion in the peak hours. SunTrust Park, an adjacent new development, is expected to add approximately 5,000 PM peak trips and 56,800 daily trips to the transportation network. The department recommends approval of a task order to improve operations of the Cobb Parkway, US 41, and I-285 westbound off-ramp and the Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway intersections. This includes extending and maximizing the left turn lanes from northbound Cobb Parkway to westbound Spring Road, and developing a barrier-separated ramp from I-285 westbound off-ramp to Circle 75 Parkway. The timing of this is critical with the proximity of this project to other active projects in the area, including managed lanes in the I-285 Atlanta Road, and it's critical to get the engineering underway so that anticipated federal funds aren't delayed. So we request that the Board of Commissioners approve project number TBD-TO-02 to the 2014 Master Task Order Contract with Pond and Company in an amount not to exceed $297,951 for Engineering Design Services on Cobb Parkway, US 41, at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway.
Thank you. Let's see how Commissioner Ott does with the buttons.
Well, first, I'm going to talk about it. How's that?
Sure.
You know, there's a lot of discussion about this, and this is one of the intersections in the areas that myself and Mr. Massimo knows, we've had a lot of discussions in the county and also with the city of Smyrna. This is one of the main access points into the city of Smyrna, and it has been congested for quite a while. So it's been on the list for quite a while. And, you know, clearly with the increase in development in the area and with the stadium, there's a whole lot of additional things that have to happen. But one of the things that's important is that you have to have a design and engineering done first before you can apply for a grant. And so this is, this contract is for the design and engineering services to kind of move that one step closer so that then we can apply if necessary for a federal grant. So I make a motion to approve.
Thank you. A second. Any other comments?
Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, I would like to iterate my support for this particular item. I did express some concern with respect to it because it does provide what I believe is a unique source, which is to pay for this with a short-term loan towards our 2016 SLOST. We have a number of projects which have been approved for SLOST that I believe there's some commitment to make sure that we have a plan as for how we're going to move forward with those projects. And with having that commitment, I feel positive about supporting this particular item, but just would ask that as we move forward to, to look at the 2016 projects, that we certainly have a plan in place with some agreement of the commissioners for how we'll move forward with those.
Any other comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
To approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company for Drainage System Improvements on Ridgewood Court. Drainage System Improvements is an approved component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Baldwin Paving Company with a savings to the project in the amount of $45,417.52 for Drainage System Improvements on Ridgewood Court.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve. Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Item five, please.
To approve change order number one final to the contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC for improvements on Pisgah Road Sidewalk. This is an approved fill-in-the-gaps project in the sidewalks component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvement Program, and we request that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with Summit Construction and Development LLC with a savings to the project in the amount of $112,879.70 for improvements on Pisgah Road Sidewalk.
Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero.
To approve change order number one final to the contract with CMEs, Inc. for temporary relocation and maintenance of fiber optic cable communications for Cumberland Area Adaptive Traffic Signal System. This is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the contract with CMEs, Inc. for the savings to the project in the amount of $1,490.40 for temporary relocation and maintenance of fiber optic cable communications for the Cumberland Area Adaptive Traffic Signal System.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott, motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you. Item seven, please.
To approve amendment number two to the contract with Arcadis, US, Inc. to develop the five-year update to the Cobb County Comprehensive Transportation Plan. The amendment number two is a no-cost time extension to the contract to develop the five-year update to the CTP, and is requested to extend the completion date of the contract from November 30th, 2014 to April 30th, 2015. The department recommends approval of amendment number two in consideration of the regional plan currently under development by the Atlanta Regional Commission, and to accommodate review and coordination of final documents in the approval process required by the board and elected bodies within each municipality. Additionally, amendment number two brings the timeline of the current schedule of the CTP into alignment with the revised schedule of the sub-grant with ARC. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number two to the contract with Arcadis, a no-cost time extension to April 30th, 2015, to develop the five-year update to the Cobb County Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Next item.
To approve amendment number two to the sub-grant with the Atlanta Regional Commission for County Comprehensive Transportation Plan Assistance Program Grant Funding for the Development of a Five-Year Update to the Cobb County 2030 Comprehensive Transportation Plan. We request that the Board of Commissioners approve amendment number two to the sub-grant with the Atlanta Regional Commission for County Comprehensive Transportation Plan Assistance Grant Funding for the Development of a Five-Year Update for the Cobb County 2030 Comprehensive Transportation Plan.
Thank you. I'll bring this forward in the form of a motion as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Tab seven. Mr. Cannon, Parks, Recs, and Cultural Affairs.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, and County Manager. Today, we have two items. The first item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a final closeout supplement agreement and deductive change order, number one, to the contract with Diversified Construction of Georgia Incorporated, as savings to the contract of $2,730.97 for a revised total contract amount of $120,669.3 for construction services related to the addition, two, and modification of the Maple House Art Center. This comes under the 2011 Parks SLOST Program. I ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you. The addition looks good, and I'm sure that staff is happy to have some semblance of an office now.
They are.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Next item, please.
Second item is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Middle Georgia Water Systems Incorporated in amount not to exceed $381,403.53 for the drilling and groundwater well-development services to support athletic field irrigation needs in various Cobb County parks. This comes under the 2011 Parks SLOST Program. I ask that you authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Any comments? Call a question. Motion carries five, zero. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. So next tab, tab eight, has to do with one item, Economic Development, CDBG. It'll be presented by Mr. Michael Hughes. I will be recusing myself from this proceedings in this tab. Commissioner Ott, your chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Michael, why don't you proceed with the agenda?
Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of this agenda item is to request that we authorize amendments to program years 2006, 2007, 2008, and 2009 of the county's annual action plan in order to reallocate unexpended home funds for must ministries. By way of a brief background, on November 25th, 2014, an agenda item was presented and approved by the Board of Commissioners to allocate approximately $85,000 in unexpended home funds to must ministries to provide rental assistance to eligible county residents through its tenant-based rental assistance program. This action was later rescinded by the Board of Commissioners in December 18th, 2014. During that meeting, staff was given direction to return with the original agenda item during the first meeting in January 2015. Based on that direction, staff is presenting this agenda item, again, for the board's consideration. This is virtually the same agenda item that was presented to you back in November, with the exception of just some additional background information on the number of individuals that were served with these funds, and then also the current rental, rental cost on a monthly and annual basis. With that, we stand.
All right. Thank you, Michael. What I'd like to do before I ask for a motion is just kind of go over some things. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of press about this item. I spent about two and a half hours on Friday, meeting with both the CDBG program office and yourself, Michael, and then also must ministries. So what I'd like to do is just kind of tell the board and folks in the audience just a little bit about what information I found out. One of the first questions that I know has come up with folks is how did we get funds dating all the way back to 2006, '07, '08, '09, and all these various different funds? And so one of the things that I found out during the meeting is that some years back, there was a consortium, and Michael, just correct me when I stray here. There was a consortium with Cobb County and Fulton County, and what happens is the money comes to the Cobb County account first, and then is dispersed to the other men, or members of the consortium. And during a review by HUD, it was determined that the money that had gone to Fulton County had not been appropriately utilized, or it basically was sitting in, in accounts. And one of the things that HUD does when they evaluate the CD, CDBG programs, they're looking to see how fast the money comes from HUD and is dispersed to the organizations that need to use the money. So what happened was the money was recycled back to the county. And when money comes back to the county, it has to be put back into the program years that it came from. So consequently, what then occurred was that there was money in the various, these various programs listed in the agenda item for 2006, '07, '08, and '09. Another thing that I also learned was that home is kind of like, if you want to call it the parent account. And under home are the different accounts that are listed, some of them being NSP, the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. Some questions were asked as to why was the money not used for a neighborhood stabilization? And what happens with that program is that program is designed to come into a neighborhood that needs some help, buy the properties, rehabilitate the homes, and then sell them to qualified homeowners. Now, those homeowners qualify for down payment assistance up until the point that they have a certain income level. So since these homes had already been bought and sold to qualified homeowners, when the program went back to look to see if they qualified for down payment assistance, they did not because they were above the income level. So the money could not be used for that particular purpose. But because it is underneath the home category, it could be reallocated inside that general account to other programs. The particular program that's in question is called the tenant-based rental assistance, similar to the down payment assistance under NSP. This program is a pilot program, which must ministries is the only participant this year. And what it does is it gives rental assistance to qualified homes. And there's a list of about 12 or 15, how many, what's the total number?
There were 11 households.
11 households that were in the program. So that's, that's how we got, got to the situation where money appeared to be from past program years, and I know there were some questions as to how come it wasn't spent. So in actuality, all the money that had been in the Cobb County portion had been spent. This is money that came back. Now, also in our meetings, what came out was the process that the CDBG program office uses to allocate funds. That is a application process that culminates in April with the granting of application dollars, and also the classification for individual nonprofits as to whether or not they meet the criteria that the CDBG office uses to qualify a nonprofit. After that time, any additional monies that become available can only be applied for by nonprofits that met the criteria in the April application process. Now, one of the things that I determined was that, and I know that there's been some other issues brought up about that, was that not all nonprofits may understand how that process works, what those criteria are. So what I'm announcing today, and I'll give more details with the commissioner comments, is a series of town hall meetings in each one of the commission districts geared towards allowing the nonprofits that are interested in finding out how the CDGB, CDBG program office looks at applications, what criteria they use to grant applications. These town halls will be designed to allow the town, the nonprofits to get educated on that process. And like I said, I'll give more details. There's actually a total of seven, and we have the dates, and I'll show that in a little bit. So that was a meeting with CDBG program office. Shortly thereafter, a meeting with must ministries to discuss some of the issues that have been brought out. Also, did find out exactly what process they had followed. And what I have here is a letter dated September 23rd, when they basically explained that due to the larger-than-expected number of participants in the pilot program, they were going to be short of money in October. They had the funds to continue till December, but what was going to happen as they moved into the next program year, starting in January, they were going to have to start notifying those 11 homeowners around the holiday period that they were going to have to find some other way to pay for the rent, because they weren't going to be, the funds were not going to be available. So since must had qualified in the April application process, they were allowed to ask for additional monies. And so basically, they just said if there was any money available, they would, they would appreciate the opportunity to get those funds. Because it's considered a major change with moving the funds around, the CDBG program office is required to have public hearings. Those were held in October, and there was no comment that came out against. And so then we got to the situation that Michael talked about when it was brought in front of the board in November with the votes, and, and I think everyone else knows what transpired. So I just wanted to kind of go over what had transpired during that time. So could I have a motion from someone?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A second.
The agenda item.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Do I have any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ott. I appreciate Commissioner Ott sharing some of the history of this particular item. I just want to add some additional history, which will reflect how I vote today, but also reflected how I voted when we discussed this matter in November. This particular item is not the first time that we've had unused funds available from any particular HUD grant. And we have redistributed funds in times past. This particular item alerted me because when I have seen redistributions of funds in the past, that I have not remembered a time where we've done it to a sole organization, even though that may have been done in the past. So it caused me to have some question because of the number of organizations that have approached me about their concerns, that they have not ever received funding through the CDBG program. Upon my discussion with CDBG staff and Mr. Hughes, I asked if we could please open up this process so that all eligible organizations can be aware that these funds are available and have opportunity to apply. After making that request, I received commitment to do such. I am not seeing that process that we typically apply in the past wasn't followed. Yes, we did have a public hearing, and there was advertisement. We have advertisement in our Marietta Daily Journal that lets people know when we have available funds. available funds. But I've always been concerned about how we still notify people about that because the Marietta Daily Journal doesn't circulate everywhere. It doesn't come where I live in South Cobb, where some of the nonprofit organizations serve people that may have some of the greatest need that depend on these funds. So after sharing my concerns, I felt as if there was some commitment to make sure that we were going to be more open, and I received correspondence that this item would be held. This item indeed was not held, and it came up for discussion and for a vote. For me, this is not about whether or not we have concern about those who may depend on these funds. We certainly know that there are populations that do need these funds. And I believe that Cobb County, which serves as a conduit to the federal government offering these funds, should be a player in that and making sure that those who are in need of our county are served. But I think that we need to make sure that everybody has a fair chance that serves these communities. I know that there are multiple organizations that provide tenant-based rental assistance, some which did apply for these funds, but I know that not all leaders of nonprofit organizations have the relationships with anyone on this board or with the CDBG Office to know that they can just call in and make a request. So I just think that with the commitment of finance, economic development, that we can modify our processes a little bit more so that we can provide a fair opportunity for those that serve those with some of the greatest needs in our community, have the fair opportunity to serve them. So my lack of support for how we may move these funds today is going to reflect that, I'm hoping in the future, that we'll have a much more open process in how we do this. And again, that when we commit to say that we're going to do something, that that's what we're going to do.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Commissioner Burrell, I believe you have comments?
Yes, I would just like to say, Commissioner Cupid, I understand your concerns, and if you recall, at the November meeting, when this was initially brought up and discussed and voted on, I asked the county manager and you, Mr. Hughes, to come back with a policy in place that we could use moving forward when we do have excess funds in the CDBG Program and where we can advertise and notify all the nonprofit agencies that are eligible for the TEBRA or home funds to submit applications and request additional funding. So I know y'all are working on something to put in place moving forward, and I appreciate that, and I think that will be a big plus in notifying the nonprofits. I also like to commend Commissioner Ott on taking the initiative to hold town hall meetings in all the districts to get the word out and notify the public as well. So I fully support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. I understand, and having just started and been trying to keep up with it, at this current time, this was the only agency that qualified for these funds. Is that correct?
Not necessarily the only one, not the only agency. They happened to contact CDBG staff to ask for assistance because of a pending issue, shortage, that they saw coming.
Do we have a list of other agencies that would qualify for this?
I don't know that we have a list, but I believe there are some other agencies that provide these services.
Okay, so we have a process in place going forward that everyone can be notified?
We are going to, we're developing a process so that when we identify unexpended funds in the future, we can make agencies aware of those funds so that they can apply competitively.
And just so I'm clear, these funds were given to Cobb because other agencies, other counties did not use their funds?
These funds had been allocated to projects, and some of those projects either finished and didn't require the remainder of the funds, or there were some other issues, and so there were some leftover funds that we were able to pull together to make available for this purpose.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, are there any other comments? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Call a question. And that motion passes three to one with the Chairman recusing himself. I think that takes us to our next tab, but we'll wait for the Chairman.
I just wanted, before we move on, to state that my recusal was because of my family member's connection to the Mus organization. Our next tab is Tab 9, Public Comment. We have nobody. Tab 10 is Appointments. First three items, I'll bring forward, if you would. The appointment is to, I'm sorry, I'm reading notes here, is to announce that I am going to inform the Board that the Vice Chair for 2015 County Year will be Commissioner Joanne Burrell. Does not require a vote, correct? Or does it?
Pardon me?
Correct. So Item 2 is to approve reappointments to the Cobb County Compensation Committee, which is also, does not require a vote, is announcement to be Tim Lee for the Chairman, as indicated in the bylaws associated with the committee, Joanne Burrell, Commissioner District 3, Neil Warren, the Sheriff, elected official member, Don Johnson, citizen member, and Tim Hargan from Home Depot, a citizen member. And I appreciate those citizens' willingness to serve additionally. Tab 3 is to approve the reappointments, the Cobb County Audit Committee. Tim Lee is Chairman, Bob Ades, Commissioner District 2 appointee, Andrew Davis is Clerk of State Court, the elected official's member, Brent McClung, citizen member, Lori Dyke, citizen member. And again, I appreciate folks' willingness to serve, to continue those efforts as well. These two audit committees and the compensation committees were a product of the Citizens' Oversight Committee recommendation that we put into place, and this Board saw fit and approved extending their usefulness into the next year. We appreciate you doing that, so those appointments are taken care of. The next is Item 4, an announcement by Commissioner Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been working through the many appointments that as a district commissioner you have, and several require that approval, I believe, by the Board. And two of the most critical, of course, are the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission, and I've selected and appointed Skip Gunther for that job, and I'd like to make sure that is announced today. I'm not sure if that requires a vote or not.
Nope. Tab 5.
And Tab 5 is a reappointment of Steve Smith to the Board of Tax Assessors. He was recommended by those that have served with him in the past and recommended keeping. It's my honor to do that as well, so Steve Smith would be appointed to the Board of Tax Assessors.
Thank you.
Excuse me, if I may.
Would you turn your microphone?
May I?
Yes.
The second one does require a vote.
So, let's stop for a minute. Commissioner Weatherford, would you bring forward a motion regarding Agenda Item 5?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the reappointment of Steve Smith to the Board of Tax Assessors.
Second?
It's multiple seconds. Any comments? Call a question. The motion carries 5:0. Thank you. Commissioner Burrell had a question regarding these gentlemen.
Are either of them in the audience today, and would you like to recognize them?
I don't know, and yes, I would.
Okay. Well, I don't know either, but.
So you guys here? Moving on. Tab 11. Commissioners' Public Address. We're going to start from my right to my left. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's good I get to go before Commissioner Burrell because you guys are going to wear you out. First thing I want to put up on the screen, this is the flyer that has been created for the town hall meetings that I talked about a little bit earlier. We're going to recall them, the Grant Application Workshop, and you will see that there is one in District 1, two, or three in District 2, one in District 3, and then two down in District 4. In addition to the town halls, which this will be published on my website, and I'd encourage each of the other Commissioners to put it on their website. Also, this will be put on the county webpage, and this flyer will be distributed in prominent locations, and the CDBG Program Office, I'm going to ask them to make sure that all the previous applicants for this past program year be notified of these different meetings. They're not intended to be district-specific. It's intended to try to give the nonprofits as many opportunities as possible to meet with the CDBG Program Office. Secondly, on January 24th, at Fuller's Park, the Atlanta Braves and the county are going to be dedicating and recognizing the first Chipper Jones Baseball Field in Cobb County. It's a program that the Atlanta Braves do, where they come in and they completely rehabilitate baseball fields in some of the county parks, and this is the very first one. So at 9:30 in the morning on January 24th, I know most of us are going to try to be there to help dedicate the field, and I believe it's going to also, we're going to be joined by some of the youth baseball leagues. That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone, and I'd first like to thank everyone for allowing me to serve as your District 3 Commissioner for a second term. I'm humbled by your support and deeply appreciate the opportunity that you have granted me. For those of you who are able to attend the swearing-in ceremony and reception, thank you for taking the time out of your busy day to support me. And for those that were not available to attend, thank you for all the well wishes and kind words, and the video is online on my webpage, if you'd like to see it. A few announcements, on next Monday, January 19th, you can join Cobb County Government and the Cobb County branch of the NAACP to celebrate the life and words of Dr. Martin Luther King. The MLK Day celebration will be held at 10:00 a.m. at the Jenny T. Anderson Theater at 548 Marietta Parkway. On January 20th, we will have our Comp Plan Hearing here in this room, the 2015 Comp Plan and Future Land Use Map Amendments, Tuesday, January 20th, at 9:00 a.m. And if you have any comments or concerns, you can contact my office or email me at joanne.burrell@cobbcounty.org. And it will be a public hearing and availability to comment on the amendments. Also, on January 22nd, we will be hosting the Dobbins Land Use Study Open House in association with the other jurisdictions in the region in preparing a joint land use study to assess land use impacts around Dobbins Air Reserve Base. You can review, discuss, and comment on the draft comments at the public open house on Thursday, the 22nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in this room. For more information, visit www.dobbinsjlus.com. And last but not least, on January 27th, will be our first of two public hearings for the community to provide feedback on proposed code amendments, and that's Tuesday, January 27th, 7:00 p.m. here in the BOC Meeting Room. And we hope you're available to attend, and feel free to email me or provide any feedback as well, be it email or phone call. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As mentioned earlier, we had several appointments, and I have three that I would like to mention now that are reappointments, so I'd like to announce the reappointment of Abby Parks to the Historic Preservation Commission. She's been on that board for many years and has served us well. John Brown on the 1% SLOSS Oversight Committee would be reappointed as well, and then Penny Warren for the Commission on Children and Youth. And as I said earlier, we're working on several of those. I'd like to also thank everyone for the warm welcome here, and as the new Commissioner on the block, once I learned how to push the button, I think I did all right towards the end. I'm not sure what the middle button's for, but we'll work on that one. And I wanted to also mention that in my 12 years of elected to the city, I don't recall improving money coming back before. That's pretty neat. We get money back, and some doesn't cost anything, so that's pretty good. I like that.
I understand you definitely want.
I do. How did it get over there?
That was mine. I was going to give it to you to remind you that that's what you wanted to do before the turning out to you.
Thank you. I really need to look over there more often, don't I? I have one other, Marlene Elkins, for the 1% SLOSS Oversight Committee, which is a reappointment as well. Thank you. I thought I had four, just couldn't find it. One last thing is the new liaison with public safety. I think that it's good to bring out some of the good things that happen in public safety, and I'd like to take a point of order and show a video that was aired last week for one of our officers and some of the great jobs that they do. So, thank you, Brett.
The kind acts of Cobb County Police Officers during his time of need. One of the officers says he was just doing his job. Natalie Pozo with News Radio 106.7 has more on how a basketball game, a car accident, and a good deed has this man speaking out about this experience with police. While driving to his eight-year-old son's basketball game last week, Ricky McKenzie was involved in a car accident. When Cobb County Police Officers responded to the scene, they did something for McKenzie that he says he will always be grateful for.
All I could think about was how I get to my son's game.
Ricky McKenzie says after the accident, he was unable to drive his car.
Chest pass.
He knew his eight-year-old son was counting on him to be at the first basketball game of the season, and he didn't want to let him down.
He means everything to me. At the end of the day, he comes first. He comes first. I didn't care about the car. They were like, oh, do you want to go to the hospital, go ambulance? No, I want to ride.
With only 20 minutes to spare, Cobb County Police Officer Grant Goforth very humbly gave McKenzie a ride.
Just doing what we need to do to help the citizens, you know? He just asked a question, and I said I could help him out, and that's all that matters.
McKenzie made it on time. His son scored the game high of 15 points that day, and the team won the game.
Good, that he made it in time. Play a lot better when I have support.
With all the recent negative attention towards police officers, McKenzie says he wants people to know that these officers came to his aid during his time of need.
And there are a lot of good cops that are out there, and a lot of good cops that will actually help, and they helped me. You know, I mean, he didn't know me, I didn't know him. I'm black, he's white, we're both fathers, and my thinking is getting to my child.
Officer Goforth says there are police officers who do good every day, but that's not always highlighted.
The negative always shows through, and the positive's always there. It's just, you know, when it's every day, one negative incident can change the perception, and I wish more positive stories would get out about what we do as police officers.
And again, the officer says it was nothing out of the ordinary and that he was just doing his job. Reporting in Cobb County, Natalie Pozo, News Radio 106.7, for Fox 5 News. Natalie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and all I'd say is amen.
Amen.
There you go. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, that was very thoughtful to showcase that, and I must say, we pride ourselves in District 4 on the relationships we have with our officers, but it's so nice to see something like this come to light, and we thank you for your continued service to our community. Similar to Joanne Burrell, I really want to thank the residents of District 4 for giving me another year to serve. 2014 was a very good year for us, and I look forward to 2015 being just as good. I have a couple of appointments to make. One of them is to thank Bernessa Drayton for her service on the Community Relations Committee, and to appoint her, she's leaving that committee, and she's now being appointed to the SLOSS Oversight Committee. I am also appointing Mr. Anthony Lee, and he will be serving on the Public Library Board, and I want to thank Ms. Cherie Coleman for your service on that board. Some upcoming announcements that we have. This Saturday, the Mabelton Improvement Coalition is holding a cleanup event of Floyd Road, and will be meeting up at Pizza Hut to begin cleaning up the corridor. And if you would like some more information, please reach out to that organization. Also, on Tuesday, as was shared, we have Comp Plan Amendments, and we have a lot of amendments that will be impacting the Mabelton Parkway corridor. So I want to strongly encourage those who live in that area to please go to the Community Development Development website and get some more information on the proposals that are being made so that you can be aware and weigh in on that. I've received a few comments, but there are some significant changes that are being made that I would like to have your feedback on. I also would like to share that I am completely tickled that I have been approached to have a State of the District address. I don't know if any other District Commissioner has done this, but the South Cobb Rotary has asked for me to do this on Thursday, February 12th. And that will be held during their Rotary Club meeting at noon at the Ostel Presbyterian Village. I would like to do one also for the community, and will be holding one at that same site at 6:30 on that evening for those who cannot make it during the day. So I hope that you will have the opportunity to attend. I would also like to make some comment with respect to some of my votes today in that a lot of -- there are a couple of votes with respect to nonprofits that I did not vote to support. And again, this has to do with process. And I am very much a stickler for process because I believe our adherence to that helps us to have an open government, which is one of our tenants of Cobb County, so that people can be aware of opportunities and how to be engaged. And I will continue to speak on behalf of that because I think for a long time, particularly in District 4, some residents have felt like they haven't been involved in process. So the one thing that I can do up here is to make sure that I support something that's going to make sure you have the best opportunity to be involved. So while I am very supportive of our nonprofits in Cobb, and I certainly want them to flourish because they serve a lot of people who have a lot of need here, I certainly want to see this be a much open process for our communities and our residents and those who serve those with the greatest need, day in and day out. Thank you.
Thank you. I have several more appointments. One is to put Darrell Cook, engineer and owner of Watts-Browning, to the Board of Adjustments Appeals in Post 2. The second announcement is to appoint Dale Burcher to the Home Builders Advisory Board in Post 1. He is from the Home Builders Member and Home Builders Association. And the third is to appoint to the Airport Advisory Position Commissioner Joanne Burrow as the representative of the Board to the Airport Advisory Board. And we will be bringing that Board, Commissioner Ott, we will be bringing that Board makeup forward in the next couple of weeks to make sure we get things going to next week. Good. To make sure we get the Board reflects the changes at the airport that have occurred. We are going to have a Town Hall. The Chairman's going to have an odd Town Hall on Thursday, July -- no, July would be a long time. Thursday, January 29th at 6:30 at the North Cobb Senior -- that's a tie. The North Cobb Senior Center. We invite those folks from District 1 or anywhere in the county that wish to come to come along to include District Commissioners. We would appreciate having everyone there as well. I have to comment about the issues surrounding this nonprofit issue. It's gotten way out of whack. When I was a first Commissioner, first made Commissioner Chairman, I got with the County Manager, and we agreed that we needed to do an internal audit of the entire process because we too, I too, believed that the process was one that wasn't well thought out, and the process was one that needed to be reviewed, and the process was one that needed to make sure that we were doing the best we possibly can with the monies we allocated for that purpose. So I initiated with the County Manager's concurrence to move forward on that audit. That audit was completed. It was presented to my office, and it was my responsibility at that time to create a response, and I drug my feet on it. In June of last year, I met with Commissioner Cupid, who had expressed her desire to be involved in making sure that the process was that whole procedure, and the response to that was inclusive of the concern she had. And she agreed to lead that effort to bring forward a draft for this Board to consider on how we should address the process. We have yet, we do not, my office does not have that draft recommendation as of yet. Today, Commissioner Ott announced another effort to try to be process-driven. And we seem to have a very important program to support nonprofits in the community that's getting called up and quagmire the Board of Commissioners. So given the fact that we've had a year and a half to make this happen, we haven't done so, and we need to address it before we get things going this fall, I'm going to use my office to get the advice and input from all four District Commissioners as what they'd like to see done and get that final report done and presented. So with that, Mr. County Manager, anything further?
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you. We are adjourned. What?
I would just like to respond to that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, I have been working with our --
I have been working with our audit department to respond to that audit, and that was delayed from last year to this year. I had asked we to move forward on a process that we did similar with our medical examiner, which all Commissioners had opportunity to respond to our audit. Because I was asked to lead that, but felt that I did not want that to become Lisa Cupid's response for the entire Board.
Right.
So to make that an objective process, I asked Latona in the middle of last year to please lead an effort to talk to all Commissioners so that we had had a response. She has committed to do that earlier this year. I know that her office has been very busy in wrapping up their review of all the departments last year, so I didn't want to inundate her with that responsibility. But know that our response to the Cobb Collaborative Process is coming this year, and I think that at the end of the day, as was shared by Michael Hughes and echoed by Commissioner Burrow, we will have a much more fair process in which nonprofits will have the opportunity to become aware of opportunities. And I commend Commissioner Ott for having those Town Hall meetings with respect to nonprofits. My office actually had some of those last year for nonprofits in our district as well. So I'm glad to see that he's taking initiative to do that for all the districts. But at the end of the day, this is just us trying to make sure that, again, everybody has a fair opportunity to be involved, and that's all that I'm supportive of.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Now we are adjourned.